Say again?
Can you make sure we have audio on this, on yours?
How do I do that?
You don't?
No. I'm over, I'm over nineteen. Are you lighting right now?
It was off.
No, it was just off on that last. Well, it says I'm on.
Oh, that's all. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Feedback loop begins. Yep. Make a hole, make a hole. Coming through. Make a hole. Someone's kind of sort of make a hole and everybody can step out. Dude, if I hear that to this day, I like step again.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
We're back in session. Sheriff's got a motion on the floor in the second half. We've heard a lot of comments in the public and I see much from most in the sheriff's department.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for being here today, whether online or in person. I want to thank you for sharing your thoughts and ideas with us. You clearly are passionate about your beliefs and I thank you for that. This Board of County Commissioners have supported the jail. For example, among other things, we have added personnel. The jail now has more corrections deputies than at any time positions that were hired specifically to provide court security and have not been used as such. We paid to provide a food service organization to take that task off of the hands of corrections to both inmates and staff. We've put 1.3 million dollars towards the repair of the jail. Purchased a new jail ban to aid in transporting inmates and new cameras. We already employ a human services risk manager who is thorough in her efforts to mitigate risk to the county. This person is absolutely available to any department or office in the county, including the jail and the sheriff's office. Hiring a second risk manager, which in my opinion would be a poor use of county funds when we already have someone who is smart, capable, and competent to perform those tasks. Among our many concerns is the fact that we could lose our ability to be insured. Should the risk pool decide to no longer cover us as a result of the issues in the jail, and they could, it's been discussed, such a decision would impact more than just the jail. The cost to ensure the county would cause a closure of the jail, which we don't want to do. Closing the jail was in fact another option which we reject, which we rejected because it would put staff in the jail out of work, cause many difficulties and expenses to our cities, tribes, and others who make use of the jail facility, and it would cause significant layoffs in all departments, putting many of our core services in jeopardy. We do in fact have a duty to fund all of county government. The last thing we want to do is to close the jail. I have clearly heard the concern that this decision has been fast-tracked and that it's being made too quickly. And for that, I will apologize to you. However, we have been talking about this for months. Much of the discussion has been around elements that could not and still cannot be made public, but which led to significant concerns of accountability, safety, and management, which in turn led to significant discussions around risk mitigation. For example, our risk manager has been asking for video from the jail on the day of the most recent death, October 7th. We still have not received it. The review panel on the first jail death still has not convened approximately two years after the fact. And among other things, an internal investigation into the second jail death was conducted by the sheriff's office rather than have an external agency conduct the investigation, although it sounds as if this is happening now. All of these and more are among the things that have guided our discussions to this point. Rest assured, we are not going to privatize the jail. We are not turning it over to the State Department of Corrections. We are not going to run it ourselves. We are not going to defund the sheriff's office. And no deputies will be lost. Instead, the county will maintain control of the facility. The facility will be guided by an individual with significant jail patient services. The only thing that would change is that it will be a department, a department under the Board of County Commissioners instead of a part of the sheriff's office, and it will not cost you anything, anything additional. This decision holds the office of the sheriff. Political party or affiliation doesn't matter. Race, ethnicity, religion, or any other such labels don't matter. What does matter is looking at the facts and determining what best protects and/or serves the county moving forward. Decision-making can be challenging, especially when making decisions that are or might be unpopular. Making decisions where whether they are hard or easy is what we were all elected to do, and I do take that responsibility seriously. In making decisions, I first do my research, sides of an issue, discuss it thoroughly, and think critically about what the right thing to do is. Then, I decide how to vote based on what I believe to be the right course of action. Or because I think a certain vote will add to my list of friends. But because I believe it is the right thing to do in the best interest of the county and all of its people. And I understand that the right decision is not always the popular or easy decision to make. But oftentimes, it is necessary to make in order to do what's right under the totality of the circumstances. Once again, we thank you for your attendance and comments today. We have read all of your emails and seen most, if not all, of your comments on Facebook. Thank you for listening to and considering our comments today. Believe it or not, we really are here to make decisions to protect and serve our county and all of its people. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, like Dave, I would like to thank everybody for coming today, whether on Zoom or in person. And thank you for your comments. Would also like to thank Sheriff Garcia, Commander Parker, their staff, and their deputies for taking, through taking the time, I apologize for my voice, taking the time to express their viewpoints on this very important issue. I would also like to state for the record that I have read the letters from the Pacific County Sheriff's Office Facebook post and the sheriff and those who both support and oppose his views. I have also listened to two of the live stream town meetings Sheriff Garcia held in South Bend and in South County. My wife was also present at the sheriff's town hall in Topen. I have read all the emails that I had received, my county email, both for and against. This is a critical time about a very important issue. And in times like these, the county needs leaders. Leaders that can make tough decisions on critical issues. This includes the sheriff, the commissioners, and the general administration. These includes, these include risk factors, financial responsibility, and viability and safety to keep our county moving forward. I am a leader, and these people that sit up here with me are also leaders. Your Pacific County General Administration staff are vital key to keeping our county functioning. And like the sheriff, they also work tirelessly for you, the citizens. To say anything different would be a complete injustice to them and the work that they do. You may ask what makes me qualified to be your county commissioner? My answer would be this. I am a thirty, forty-year resident of Pacific County. And through my many years of community involvement, also being a business owner for twenty-seven of those years, I have raised seven children in Pacific County with my wife and family. I feel I have gained the respect of my community, and this respect hopefully is what led voters to vote for me to be their leader and make tough decisions on their behalf. I've had to be a leader most of my adult life, as I started my construction business at the age of twenty-seven, and I made many tough choices, like most of you, I'm sure also have. Some good and are some are not so good. But in the end, I took full responsibility for all of those decisions. Despite all the chatter and comments about not liking Sheriff Garcia, it's quite the opposite for me, and I believe that the sheriff in his own words, that he'd say that statement is untrue. I will publicly say today, I do appreciate what the sheriff has done for his office and think he would agree that we may not always agree on all topics, but at the end of the day, we can shake hands and respect each other's view. This is not an issue I take lightly. For many who don't know me, I'm a fact-checker. You can ask my kids or even my commissioners that sit with me. I make my decision based on facts. I do not base my decisions on this thesis or ever will on emotion, opinion, or just sheer popularity. They will always be based on facts. I've spoken to Sheriff Garcia on many issues these last two years, and I've also spoken to other agencies, county and city officials, stakeholders, staff, and citizens on other issues within the county. All counties are exposed to risk every single day. Probably none are more important to this county right now than our current risk assessment or our county's riskiest standpoint. I am not sitting here to point fingers or place blame on anyone or the sheriff for our recent jail deaths. These are very unfortunate issues that have happened, and it was brought to the county's risk management attention through our county risk pool that we have deep concerns regarding these issues. It's not what or who's to blame, but more on how much, how much these types of settlements could cost our county as our insurer, which overall would then cost the citizens of this county more money. This is the duty of a risk pool. I would also like to take this moment to clarify some information about commissioners not caring or funding the sheriff's and correctional offices. In my two years as commissioner, the GA have supported the sheriff's corrections in many ways. For example, the purchase of eight new vehicles with upgrades, a new jail chargers, which the sheriff has requested through a workshop done in front of the board, Axon Body Cam purchases, new Body Cam purchases for the sheriff's deputies with the sheriff and his staff, jail meal services from an independent provider to help with correction deputy duties via a workshop with Holly Beal Chief and her staff, upgraded jail cameras to replace our non-working or inadequate ones. I believe Commander Parker presented that to us in a workshop. Also, that was also for the protection of the correctional officers via that workshop. We also did the emergency jail door replacements at Commander Parker's workshop request. Once again, you've heard this, this is a 1.3 million dollar allocation for this. Nine hundred thousand would be from our, from the general fund, four hundred and fifty, although that wasn't secured at that time, could come from then. So it would be disingenuous to say that the general administration and the commissioners don't care and the issues fall on deaf ears. I would also like to add that Sergeant Flynn is correct. He did present the idea of those bracelets at a workshop. However, it was an idea brought up and no formal request to purchase was ever brought before the board. We also just very recently, the sheriff had touched on this, had a workshop with Commander Parker, Sheriff Garcia, and some county man staff on the jail radar vital sensors and/or the bracelets, November 27th. And the cost breakdowns for both, that still is in the process. We have, we have not discussed that furthermore on that. I will also note that a similar idea was a email to Commander Parker through risk management and the Washington County's risk pool earlier this year before the latest jail death. Once again, this is not to blame anyone, this is for informational timelines. I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I would totally support these issues like the vital jail pod deals. Before I finish, I'd like you all to know that I instilled in all of my children respect, integrity, love, and appreciation for all that they have and the community that they live in, and I live by these standards also. You may not know who cares more about their community than me, a community that has been there for my family in the toughest of times. I will continue to serve my county and the citizens to the best of my ability to make these hard decisions and hope that no matter what the outcome of this vote, the sheriff's office, correctional deputies, general administration, and commissioners can all continue to work collectively to keep this county moving forward and in a positive direction. I will leave everyone with a quote, a quote, excuse me, which you will find in my office, in the hall, down to next to an American flag and photos of my family, and it's been there for two years. Because it is a moral compass I, the county, follow, it is a quote from Albert Einstein. What is right is not always popular, and what is popular is not always right. Thank you all for your time.
Again, I as well would like to thank you all for being here, for sharing your concerns, your comments, your points of view, everyone here and online. And I'm very happy that the sheriff has done so much outreach. Sheriff, you are out there in every part of the county, and I think that's fantastic. I think it's wonderful that you guys have all developed a relationship with the sheriff and his team. But I have to say that that has not been the case with the county commissioners from the beginning. And the sheriff alluded to that a bit in his statements. It has been very difficult to try and work with their department on things when we don't know about them. We have, we have workshops always available, our door is always open. We have monthly, bimonthly, or twice a month, department meetings. We have once a month joint elected officials meetings. Up until recently, the sheriff's office has never participated in those. Someone mentioned five jail, five suicide attempts, we have, we have no idea. I mean, and, and these are things that are risk issues and, and it's, it's just, it's just really disappointing. I, I will say that, I know I had a whole thing prepared, and this is all just been, it's been a lot. I will say that I, I did waffle a bit after this meeting because of the word blindsided. We have been dealing with this for, the jail's been an issue long before you were there. Everybody is correct. Previous boards, whether, they haven't been made aware, whether they didn't have the money, which I know in years past has been hurtful, have, have not put enough attention into the jail facility. And I think it's partly, I've been doing a homeowner myself, sometimes once you start on a remodel, where you start when you're not wasting money, sometimes you've got to start at a place that's going to cost you too much and you can't afford it. And I think that's, and I'm not saying that's an okay thing, but I'm saying at the county level, I think that's always been an issue with trying to take care of the jail, is that there's so much money that needs to be spent. It is forty years old next year. And the siding put on it should have never been put on in this climate. I don't know what the hell it is, but you can't paint it, you can't pressure wash it. It's hanging on, there's been plumbing issues for decades. And we have, we, we have spent quite a bit of money trying to alleviate those. I understand they're still not fixed. We will continue to peck away at it and try and get it fixed. I would argue that having the jail under our supervision, we're going to know about these issues in real time. And it, it's difficult when you're, when you're running your own department, you don't, you don't necessarily have time to run and, you know, run and tell about every little thing, but then that stuff adds up, and we can't do anything about it if we don't know. Recurrence did a walkthrough early this year with your staff, I think, I don't know who was there. But she came back and said, we got to fix this. I mean, and that was the doors. I know there's a lot of other things going on up there, but, but that was a huge safety issue for the, for the officers and for the inmates. You know, so I really feel that this board has been responsive to requests. We have put, and, and to put the budget numbers out there in Mr. Blackinger's statement, we're not to criticize the sheriff for what he spends. It was, it was to note that we have, we have up these monies. We can only, we have every other department in this county to try and fund. You have services that are not just public safety related. Granted, that is, you know, I, I think that's our first, first issue. But, you know, you have to fund the assessor's office to generate the rest, the assessed values that the treasurer can levy property taxes, which nobody wants to pay, but it is the prime funder of the core of the general fund of public services. It's just how it is. And, and so there's only so much money to go around. We've had these arguments with the sheriff. The sheriff's job is to tell us, I need this money, and our job is to tell him, this is what we can give you. And, and then we, you know, and then we try and work toward a goal on other things. I know in the Department of Public Works, we have a fight here plan, whether it's for equipment, whether it's for projects, you know, all this stuff. I would love to have that kind of, that kind of situation with other departments if it is needed. Maybe with your equipment that you need if you haven't gotten it, you know, like we already did the vests and the, and the tasers and the body cams and we have, it's, it's really unfortunate that the corrections deputies letter used fill-in deferent ears so many times because, you know, for those of you that have been there a long time, it's very possible that you feel that way, and I apologize for that. But with this board, almost everything that has been brought to us, we have considered and tried to fund. And because we understand we don't want, we, we appreciate our employees, we don't want them to be in a negative situation. So, I guess that's it. I appreciate you all, no matter how this goes, I hope that we can continue to work together. I hope that the deputies under the jail, that are employed at the jail will, will, will work with us if that's how we vote. I'm sure there's other things I'd like to say that I can't, I can't take up right now. I, I am very appreciative of the things that Sheriff Andy Dave brought up because I agree with him, so I guess I'll, I'll close.
I would also like to, I'm sure just, I hope no matter which way this goes, that deputies, sheriff's office, the general administration can bridge the gap. We, we all can clearly see through the voice of concern from citizens, from the sheriff, from corrections, there, there is a flaw in that. I, I'm not going to sit on this side of the diocese and not recognize that. You know, there, there's no naivety on my side that this isn't a potential big challenge. We all can agree in that, whether it's the sheriff doing it or county commissioners. This is a non-damn, undaunting task for anyone. But I hope that everyone here knows, especially the staff, correctional officers, including the deputies, command staff, you have our support, whichever way this goes. I have never, other than the trailer, which was a weird topic, but we'll talk about that later, have ever gone against the grain on that. I have had differences, like I stated in here. It is my job to go through these vendors every time they come across, not to pick apart, not to micromanage a department. Me and the sheriff have had talks about these. It's hard to make sure that there are other things that don't take advantage of the departments that don't get seen. That's what it's for. Another layer of protection for you, the citizens, not to pay more for something. And Jennifer right here can attest to it, and the other departments can help attest. I do the same for all departments. It's not one department. This is all department's expenditures. So, that's what I do. That's what I can contribute, a partial part of what I contribute as a commissioner. So, I hope you all understand that. We don't take public comment on anymore, sorry. I mean, if you want to speak, I guess we can.
I just have one, one part of my prepared statement, I guess I'd like to make. There's a lot of you in this room that do know me and there's a lot of you that don't. But, one thing I do take issue with is the fact that I'm not involved in my community because I have been for a very long time. And, and back to the detriment of my family sometimes. So, when you become an elected official, one of the things that you realize very quickly are that there are many details and events that you become aware of and have to deal with and make decisions on that are not or should be for public consumption. That is why we are elected to conduct business and make decisions on behalf of the taxpayers that elect us. It is a heavy weight to bear, and believe me, if I did not think that, if I do not think this is the correct action to take at this time, I will not be voting for it. The easiest actions are not always the correct ones, and the correct ones are often not easy.
I too would like to say that I respect the many women working within the sheriff's department, work on the road, and in corrections. I also respect all of the people working in the county and public departments. Part of our responsibility is to make decisions that are in the best interest of all and fair to all.
Thank you guys for your words. I'd like to point out, this is an office, not a department, a separate portion of the county government.
I apologize if we didn't scope on that. Okay, there is a motion, maybe in a second. Are we ready to call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 How come you didn't, I have a question.
Stay calm, please.
How come you didn't listen to all of us that took the time to come here today on this thing and all of us that are here?
I asked a public comment. It was three and a half hours. I asked everybody in the room, is there any more comment?
No, I know, I, I, my thing, how come you didn't listen? Every single one of them said, slow down, slow down, don't make a decision today. I'm saying, how come you didn't listen to what everyone said? I was here the whole time.
I, I understand that. Anyway, all right. I apologize, but we're going to move on with the agenda now.
You voted, because I didn't hear it.
So, because that agenda is, I'm just.
That was called.
What, your motion?
Decision, drive without drinking, and you can, and we're trusting you to make decisions for us. Recall.
Items regarding South District Court on intent.
Now, a second damage.
This is a late issue that was no further purposes.
That is correct. Travis did receive his invoice. He got it processed in his office, submitted to the auditor's office, they paid it on time. And I don't know if it's USPS, if the company is holding the payment to be applied the following day. We're not really sure what broke down, but Travis did everything he was supposed to do to get it paid on time.
Thank you.
Aye.
Items regarding Department of Public Works on the line.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024, yes, number 507, in the matter of authorizing the initial closure of the NACL road, number 19690, between mile 4.2 and mile 4.4.
Now, a second damage.
So, the upper NACL has been something that has been, has been an issue for some time since 1973. There has been, there's been a lot of issues with stability at that hillside. There has been, there's been a lot of issues with stability at that hillside. There have been two geotechnical reports done, one before my time. My South County Road Supervisor Shane Jansen had took me up there about two years ago roughly. It looked like there was activity happening, but there's gonna be a potential slide coming soon. So, at that point in time, I had requested that we put a temporary closure up on that section of the roads so that we could have another geotechnical report done. So, I went ahead and went through DCI, which is our current engineering firm that we are contracting with. And their recommendations were to close the road. At this time, right now, the cost to even repair that would be substantial, probably over $1 million. And that, and that, there, we would have to probably go to different companies and request to purchase additional property. And it's just not feasible for the county or the road department to do that, since we do have other options in and out of that section of road. We will be reaching out to, which Tony's doing right now, enter diversity in a long-term agreement capacity there and help with maintenance on the Bussin Canyon. So, there is an alternate at Route Eight to use name that we have been using since the temporary closures previously.
And even if we get fixed, it's not going to take a state-exhibitsable area there?
Yeah.
Or slides? Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item twelve.
I move to approve the request to purchase John Deere six M one oh five cap tractor with one year updated machinery and support package in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. It is twenty twenty-five Alho Maverick two point two four boom mower with sixty-inch rotary in the amount of one hundred and three thousand two hundred ninety dollars and fifty-one cents. All purchased from Capen machinery on state contract in the total amount of two hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and ten cents, including sales tax plus any applicable taxes to be paid from equipment rental revolving funds. Road equipment fund number five zero two and four zero four. Subject to adequate budget appropriations and the settled motion made by the October eight, twenty twenty-four meeting pertaining to the purchase of twenty twenty-four tractor and boom mower, noting that they are no longer available at the time of purchase.
And I will second that motion.
So, I had put in on October eighth to approve the purchase for the twenty twenty-four models. And in between the time of approval and having that discussion with them and the approval, they had actually sold out because they couldn't give them a purchase order in time for those pieces of machinery. So, we had to get a new quote for the twenty twenty-five model, which is around forty-seven hundred dollars more. However, our mechanics were actually happier with this purchase due to having a cap tractor that actually has a better transmission and engine, so.
Do you have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item thirteen.
I move to approve the funds transfer agreement with U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration regarding the sixty-seventh place public enhancement to Willapaw National Wildlife Refuge, providing a thirty-one thousand dollar match to be paid from County Road Fund number one oh four, subject to adequate budget appropriations and authorized the chair to sign.
And I will second that motion.
Good day, Dave. Yes, so they're ready to go out to advertise for the project in February, and this is just kind of wrapping every, all the things they need before they can go out to bid. So, our commitment on our end was a fiscal contribution of thirty-one thousand dollars. We are going to trade some, we're gonna find some areas to stage, some equipment while they do the, the work. And I believe there might be a couple toll credits that might be involved in step two as it oozes forward. Maybe that was brought up. I'll, I'll check on that reason. But as far as what we're doing here, we're paying thirty-one thousand dollars to get about three point two million dollars worth of road fixed on sixty-seventh place out to the wildlife refuge, a refuge that just desperately needs to get repaired.
Is this gonna take care of that?
Yeah.
Is this gonna do the fix, or is there gonna be more after this?
Well, this is just the one section that's on the lower part there where the gaps, no, this is, this is actually just probably less than a half a mile worth of road here. But this is where it's alone, where the course tracks are, where it's really bad and stuff too. But on, on the flip side too, because we've done this, Sean Hayter, the engineer, that's leading this project, said if we do more projects there, there'll be no more fiscal contributions on our end. This, this would, this would basically be the seed money that would give us more opportunities to put federal dollars through that road and not come out of, out of pocket for us.
I mean, that's what he's doing, so.
Yes.
It was good to have him at that meeting, that last meeting we had about this too.
Yeah, he's, he's actually proud of us to work with, great guy, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item fourteen.
I move to approve the request to purchase one Axis S twenty-two twelve camera station and eight Axis M two zero three six LE day-night cameras from WAV LLC to replace outdated and or non-working cameras at the North County Shop in the amount of six thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and three cents with tax plus shipping and any applicable taxes to be paid for the equi, the equipment rental and revolving road fund, fund number five zero two dot one zero four, and note three bids worth obtained.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, um, this is replacing cameras, correct?
Yeah, so as we know, technology, like by the time we get these cameras, they'll probably be outdated anyway. So, what we have on there is actually really, really, really old. You can't really tell who's who or what's what. So, I thought upgrading these, especially with newer equipment that we're getting now, and just for the safety of everybody involved, having some better equipment would be a good idea for us.
So, that's for North County, and then the next item is for South County, same thing, right?
Correct, yeah.
I move to approve the request to purchase one Axis S twenty-two zero eight camera station and eight Axis M two zero three six LE A nine cameras from WAV LLC to replace outdated and or non-working cameras at the South County Shop in the amount of five thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and nine cents with tax plus shipping and any applicable taxes to be paid for the equipment rental and revolving road equipment fund number five zero two dot one zero four, and note three bids worth obtained.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same cameras, different location. Items regarding emergency management, item sixteen.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant Program Agreement number two twenty-five dash two three nine with Washington Military Department in the total amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred one dollars, and authorize the chair to sign.
And I will second that motion.
Is Director McDougall on? There's, I can't tell. I'm guessing maybe he is not. This is, this is a, a grant we get from them every year, so. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item seventeen.
Yeah?
Oh, you were there, so thank you.
Yeah, I opened it myself. But I thank you for approving that. This is our annual emergency management performance grant. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Item seventeen.
I move to approve the memorandum, memorandum of understanding that Shoal Water Bay Tribe provide emergency management services in the event of a disaster affecting Pacific County and the Shoal Water Bay Tribe.
And I will second that motion.
Scott?
So, this, this, this is basically formalizing what has been actual practice since before my time and emergency management. We have always worked together, even though the tribe is a sovereign government. Everybody who lives within the boundaries of the tribe is also a Pacific County resident. And we have a great working relationship with the tribe. This just formalizes our ability to be able to provide emergency management services to the tribe and receive them from the tribe in the event of a disaster.
That's, and that's a fantastic collaboration you have there. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items regarding general business, item eighteen.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero five eight in the matter of modifying the personnel policy and procedures created on descriptions as homes. Coroner, special employment here. Chief Deputy Coroner, Management Grade Seventeen. Deputy Coroner, Local Three Six Seven C, Representative Grade Fifteen. And Jail Services Director, Special Employment Agreement, all effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
And I will second that motion.
Madam Chair, we do need to make one correction on that motion. The deputy coroner position should be Management Grade Fifteen. Local Three Six Seven C wasn't here.
Deputy coroner?
Uh, yes, that's what I did.
Oh, it just says grade, it doesn't say management.
Yeah, it should be Management Grade Fifteen, not here.
Okay. It's duly noted that that was a management position, not a...
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, this is simply the...
It's duly noted that that was a management position, not a...
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, this is simply the... So, so this is simply a matter of putting job descriptions before the boards will approve those in anticipation of adopting budget appropriations later this afternoon.
Questions?
Aye.
Aye. Item nineteen.
I move to adopt res, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero five nine in the matter of establishing the Pacific County Department of Coroner in accordance with RCW three six dot one six dot zero three zero to become effective twelve oh one AM on January first, twenty twenty-five.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. Currently, due to the size of our county, our prosecuting attorney serves, in addition to his role as a prosecuting attorney, he serves as the coroner as well. There's a legislative change that takes effect on January first, twenty twenty-five that requires us to take action and hire a separate coroner, which is what we're talking about here. Simply establishing the Pacific County Department of the Coroner in accordance with the applicable state law. It's something that has been discussed in budget wars shots with the prosecuting attorney for many, many years, going back well over a decade, that this could be on the horizon. And now it is, because the RCW that governs this will take effect effective in January. So, we're simply making the appropriate change.
And just to add to that, Washington State Association of Counties, that is one legislative, one of our, our points that we're asking for through the Washington State Association of Counties is for at least enter initial funding for this for the counties that have to do it. I think there's, I think there's seven or eight counties that are of our size that have to do this. So, we're asking for some, some funding on, on getting the, the departments going. It'd be nice to get perennial funding, but I doubt that will happen, so.
This is a, this is, this is a statutory requirement, it needs to be clear to the public. There, unless something that, something materializes with money that Commissioner Olson has mentioned may or may not occur, all of this comes out of the general fund. It's, it's, what constitutes an unfunded mandate for government service that will be...
I mean, it will, it very, will be the right thing to do because of, the reason they did this was because of the potential conflict in having your coroner and your prosecutors. Obviously, we completely understand that, but, but it's gonna cost us.
Everything has a cost. We, we have posted public comment, or comments to the chair.
Um, David, before we're done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Item twenty.
I move to approve the interagency agreement for reentry demonstration into the project HCA, contract number K eight one six one with the Washington State Healthcare Authority, and authorize the chair to sign.
And I will second that motion.
Well, it is me, but if I'm to stake in, we have Jessica in today that has really been working hard on that, so I am going to defer to her.
I believe this is an amendment to the original MOU. There've been a lot of conversations about the liability of the service, kind of the logistics of the service. So, like I've mentioned before, the benefit of being an early implementer is that you have a lot of say in what the healthcare authority brings down and actually starts to implement. So, some of those things that have been brought up have been heard by the healthcare authority, and they've amended contracts with that, including extending deadlines. And also adding a clause about unused funds or funds that are used, that's what I'm looking for, inappropriately.
Yes.
Because the healthcare authority is providing some funding to build capacity for this. So, they're just putting in some assurances that it goes to where it needs to go, but also reflecting some of the things that they've heard in the last almost a year about how difficult this may be to implement.
Thanks, Josh.
Yep.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and there's Madam Chair, Gracie has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gracie.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to add, because I knew Jessica would cover the programmatic side, but we've been in conversations with healthcare authority in regards to the administrative frees and have been notified that contracts that are already in motion will not be impacted. So, I just wanted to put that out there for the record as well.
Thank you. And we just voted, right? Yes. Okay. Item twenty-one.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero six zero in the matter of updating the Pacific County Policy Manual specifically amending the credit card slash account policy in resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero four. All other conflicting resolutions shall be rescinded.
And I will second that motion.
Yeah, so we cleaned up a little bit of the language in here. We added referencing our procurement and purchasing policies so that the SEO would be happy that it applies with our procurement policy as well. And we did also add the responsibility of the credit card user. And this was specific request from the auditor's office that if the accounts are not paid on time due to negligence on the part of the officer department, they, they would be responsible for the late fees. But in your previous motion regarding Travis, his was submitted on time, so they can ask for exceptions. So, let's just clean up that language so everybody is on the same page and everybody knows what to expect.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-two.
I move to approve public official bond from the North District Court Judge Proton Procollier like the January first, twenty twenty-five.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item regarding Commissioners Office, item twenty-three.
I move to approve the appointment of Commissioner Jerry Doyle as chair and Commissioner David Tobin as vice chair like the January first, twenty twenty-five.
And I will second that motion.
And I will say aye first.
Aye.
Item twenty-four.
I move to approve the individual commissioner appointments to boards slash commissioners slash committees for the year twenty twenty-five.
And I will second that motion.
Each of us as commissioners have certain boards and, and committees that we sit on, and these are all available and mandatory to us. They're available if anybody would like to, to have a copy and know the things. Some of them we are all required to sit on, but some of them we choose. There's a necessity and we each choose which ones we're gonna be on, and we look at it this year. And, and maybe there are few changes actually, just a couple. So, if anybody would like to see that, it's available. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're to our public hearing phase for the budget. I guess we're just gonna jump right in.
Madam Chair, I respectfully request a brief ten-minute recess just to open it at three o'clock.
Which, oh, I see.
Just round, open at three.
Um, that's fine. We will have to have public hearing on the budget because we have to adopt the budget. It's the sixth of December. And we will recess until three o'clock. We will come back and complete the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Yep, we'll be back at three o'clock for our budget.